The August 23rd. Uh, plenty more to be done. The town of Deer Park, let's stand for the public.
Like may be this is good life in United States of America. And we're a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Oh, do we have a roll call please? Frank Ryan. Bob Vickaretti. To that right of me is Amanda Gore, the planning board secretary, our Italian engineer, John Gosek. And tonight we have no legal representation. Our attorney is not here tonight, so we're likely a little limited on, on the actions we can take legally. Well, I have my glasses. Um, first on the agenda tonight is the Golden Basin. It's a site plan, a public hearing. Amanda, do we have, um, the Kelly, the receipts?
Yes, all the certified mails were good.
Okay, who's representative here for Golden Basin then?
Good evening everyone. I'm just here to present to this product. Uh, yeah, appreciate any part and any feedback is work. We're just here to, yes.
Okay, well, why don't you just explain the project a little bit that, uh, that you're proposing here anyway?
Sure, that was, uh, this unit was developed. We tried to review exactly based on this team footprint. Two story mixed use, front door is supposed to be used as a convenience store. Second floor is two, uh, bad units for rental. So that's a proposed use and we try to, uh, build a new subject head system. Uh, keep existing, uh, entrance, which on the front it also has a back entrance too. We just keep existing, uh, footprint, also property line and, uh, existing road entries, uh, existing parking spots. That's about this project.
Okay. Do you have, uh, in your possession, the, um, the, uh, consultant, uh, full school engineers comments? Do you have that?
Uh.
Better in possession tonight?
Well, actually today only owner and me.
Okay, well, I want to have, uh, we're going to go over those questions here before we go public. I'll have John, John, you want to go over them?
Yeah. So based on the recent milk, um, from our previous comment, the plans are stamped by the design professional. We had also asked for a licensed land surveyor for the survey. There was a comment regarding potential alterations to the entrance onto a state highway. I should say 209. And there are none, so we're just asking the note to be on the plans that there will be no alteration to the existing entrance, which of course precludes them from having to go to D O T. Comment three is just a general comment at the time of building permit that there has to be fire separation between two floors. Comment four is just noting that there are some details shown on the plans that I don't think applies to the site plan. For example, how to exist in well, the other proposed well detail. You have some curb and sidewalk detail, but I don't think your proposal curbing, maybe more of an easy on certain. Um, asked for even just a little bit of island landscaping around the building. Um, and I don't know if there's a short form EAF in the file, or maybe, but I didn't get it electronically. So we got to make sure for secret, we have a short form.
What did you say? What did you show?
Has been submitted?
Yes.
Is that true?
I don't have the application.
So that's, that's our remaining comments. They did do a, uh, a design for upgraded septic, so.
Was there a perk witness or?
Uh, there was perks done on, were the perk test witnessed? Uh, I don't know. When it's a redevelopment, there are new, new homes and new, new sites, yes. I don't know if we do the same for basically when it's just an upgrade. So, uh, I guess if that's the only item and the board wants to make action, I mean, they got a condition.
Well, it's not, I don't know if we're up to that point in conditional. We still, we still need some, some changes done to the site plan map. And maybe regards to the probes or the garbage on there for, uh, for the D O T access off of 209. So I don't know if it's even up for conditional. Correct. As far as 239 concerned, we'll just table that.
We actually did 239. 239 was already done. It went to the county. We got response from the board's council plan.
There was nothing.
And.
Well, D O T would pick up on 239 anyways, but.
Right.
There's no response from that either. All right, well, at this point we can, uh, we can open the, uh, public hearing. Do you have a motion to open a public hearing on the application? Give me a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And, uh, Amanda, can we get the public initiative?
Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the town of Deer Park Planning Board, Orange County, New York, pursuant to Article 7 of the Town of Deer Park's zoning law on an application for a site plan review. The application affects the following premises. Record owners, Golden Mason, Inc. Application applicant, Golden Mason. Tax map designation, Section 38, Act 2, Act 1. Zone designation, Hamlet, mixed use. Description of application, mixed use building, commercial and residential, located at 443 U S Route 209, New York, New York. 12746. Application, information on this application to be viewed at the town. The town currently has its town of Deer Park, 420 Route 209. The hearing shall take place at 7 o'clock P M on the 23rd day of August, 2023, at the Town of Deer Park Downhole, located at 420 Route 209. Town of Deer Park, Orange County, New York, are suing thereafter as practical. All parties wishing to be heard shall be heard at that time.
Thank you, Amanda. John, you have, you don't have any further comments on this, but just pointing. Do you have more comments before we can take questions from the other? Okay. Um, at this point, we'll, um, you have the, I just drive. All right, we're going to open the, uh, public hearing portion of the application here. And then we have a Ralph, uh, Bowman, Roman, I'm sorry, I'm killing that. N D 15th and Ave Street? Bowman?
Yeah.
Ralph Bowman?
Right here.
Yeah. Yeah, if you wanted to come up and, depending, you have a comment you'd like to make?
No, I'm just telling you I'm here.
Oh. So we appreciate it. Thank you. How about a Peter Lister?
205. I just signed to let you know I was here and didn't realize.
All right. Okay. Well, then let me ask this question. Is there anybody here tonight present that would like to make a comment on the application for the Golden Basin?
What is it? What, what are they going to build?
He just explained it. Hey, I'm not.
I heard anything.
We can't hear you.
Not a word.
Well, if, if you want, there's seats available here in the front. If you can't hear us, move up here.
I just couldn't understand.
Understanding.
Everybody has microphones.
Advocate is proposing to construct a convenience store on a first floor and a second floor, um, with two apartments, two apartments within the same footprint of the existing structure that's there. So the footprint of the structure that's there will remain the same.
Was there.
Where the old space.
Which building is it?
It was demolished.
Right. The was there, the. The bar that was there is not there now.
Correct. What we're trying to establish is that, it may be a new building, but it's not going to be any bigger, any taller, any different than an existing building. So when it comes to a site plan, we're not, we're not moving the building anywhere different on the property. It's staying exactly where it was. It's just being rebuilt.
Parking lot there and they'll.
Where is the location on the property that they're going to build?
The same place the building was there.
The corner. I know, where was the building? That's what I'm asking.
The old, the old bar there. Banky.
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 Yes, Banky, Banky, yeah.
Across from C and D.
It's right on the corner of a branch.
Yeah, I know where it is.
All right, well, outside of the comments from the public, I assume at this point if we make a motion to close the public hearing. No, need to keep it all through the only way, so.
Can I ask a question on the last?
Yeah, must have voted, we can ask a question. Say your name at the voting.
You have to go.
Yep.
This way we can hear you.
Yeah, my name is Joe Latini. And we own property of our nursing drive. I was looking through the site maps. I was looking through the engineering study. And I was looking at the sewage plan for the new facility over here.
Wait, wait, wait. I think you found the wrong application.
Well, what are we talking about?
The type of spanks.
No, this is a new, okay. My apologies, because I was told tonight was going to be talking about.
No, I said, we had a public hearing on that. That public hearing is closed. There is no further public comment on that.
So then in other words, it says it's a done deal? That's what you're saying?
No, not done. What do you mean? Let me ask you, what's your petition of done deal?
They're going to build.
They don't have a. What are you talking about? The new century?
There's no building permits. There's no site plan sign. There's, there's nobody doing nothing. They're not even cutting the grass over there, getting ready to do.
Well, I could tell that. I've only lived here for about, oh, I don't know, 67 years. So I, I knew a little bit about what goes on.
Okay, yeah, but, yeah, this is about, this, this public hearing is about the property over here.
All right.
I'm sorry, but.
No, that's okay.
So when do they plan to do it? When is that going to be addressed and what's on?
Yeah, I haven't gone to the voting if you got a question.
Because this is all.
All right, so let's make a motion to close the public hearing on the Golden Basin.
Wait, wait, wait. When is this, when is this supposed to start building?
Wait, 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 wait. If you have a question, you have to come to the voting. You just don't take them out of the vote. I'm sorry, go ahead. Your name?
Cindy Brown.
Cindy, I, that's it.
So I live on 209. And my question doesn't pertain to the bar or the convenience store and the apartments.
Okay.
My question pertains to the new century films.
But we're, we're on the application we're on right now.
Third on the agenda.
This is a public hearing for the, for the, for the, uh, for the Golden Basin development only.
It's not public.
So are you going to be talking about your century films tonight?
They're on the agenda, I can tell you that.
It's on the agenda, okay.
But it's not going to be.
But it's not a public hearing.
But they're on the agenda, that's all I see. Well, handle that.
I just want to know, uh, when is this building project supposed to start? And how long will it take?
Which building are you referring to?
Huh? The, the Golden Basin there.
The guy didn't get a building permit yet, so we, that's not.
No, so it's not even that far.
Oh, just say your name for the record, I'm sorry.
Oh, Elaine Vashel. So what does that mean then? That, uh, what has to, what process has to follow?
They have to resubmit the, the plans, respond to our comments satisfactorily, and then the board can, can take action on it, probably at the next meeting.
Probably what?
At the next, next meeting.
So another, uh, month for now?
Yeah.
Next month.
Okay. I guess that's it.
All right, now, can we have a motion to close the public hearing on the Golden Basin?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes, yes.
Motion carries, the public hearing is closed. On the Golden Basin.
The only thing I, I can recommend is if the board wants to take, uh, action on secret tonight, if this application is part of all that, you can, uh, you can do so.
Declare a negative deck?
Yes.
Yeah, we've already declared negative.
Okay. Uh, we can make a motion on this application for Golden Basin for, uh, secret, declare a negative deck tonight?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
And yes, so negative duck in Golden Basin. Uh, that concludes the applications. Uh, next one, second one on the agenda is the, uh, Forest Enterprises, uh, 824 Peapack Trail. Two lots of them.
He's going to put it up on the.
Okay, good evening. My name, is this working?
I can hear you, yes.
All right, uh, my name is Holly Fuller. I'm here to represent our client, Forest Enterprises, regarding a proposed two lot subdivision. The property is located at the intersection of Peapack Trail, Route, uh, 42 and Park Road. The property is about 7.3 acres. There's an existing house located on the Peapack Trail side. We are proposing that the lot be subdivided and a house be built on the Park Road side. So driver would come in up there. It would be serviced by its own well and septic. And, um, it is pretty much a straightforward building lot. It would be about three and a half acres.
And now, it is, uh, kind of walked up a little bit closer to Holly. I'm sorry, just so you can look at it.
Do you have a plan?
I, you don't, we're not going to build on it.
That was way back. They were actually supposed to be on the last, on the two.
Oh, so we add them or have them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, you have to hunk out.
This is, uh, Peapack, 42. Park Road is here, that's that little road up on 42. Just when you make your way off. Well, so evidently this, this went parcel, you're looking just to put that division line between the two.
Right, almost a half, a little bit.
Down the street, well, basically down the street for the property.
Yep. You saw this in a pre-application conference last month.
Well, I haven't, I haven't.
I remember.
Do you know what that, do you know what the zoning is of the house?
R S.
Oh, we're, we're, yeah. Is this, uh, this is an existing house? I'm sorry.
Yes.
This existing house and it's all, there's nothing new there. You're going to add with that division line and possibly a new house up on.
Yep, new house, definitely.
John, do you have that now?
I did.
John, can I go to this one real quick?
He presented it, I think, uh, John presented it at the last meeting, maybe last month's meeting. So we did our review after we got that. So there is review comments on file, correct with the president, but a new submission since our review comments, correct?
We submitted one on August 5th. And I think that's what these are from, is these comments are on August 5th.
Oh, yes. Yes. So there hasn't, there hasn't been a resubmission since our August 5th comments, or there hasn't?
That's correct, but for some reason I don't, I don't know if you got the latest. I just checked my email and made sure we did send you the latest plans, application, E A F, the variance that was found on file for the existing garage, all of that on August 5th. However, your comments say that we needed to provide a short form E A F. That was included in the email. I was just going to note that. Um, and that the total area of psych disturbance is located on the plans and paraplacing intestinal information is also located on the plans. So I don't know if those were leftover notes from the previous comments, but.
We did our review on August 5th. I haven't, I don't know if we went, have, have seen a revised plan. So he must have revised the plans.
But we sent, that, we sent the plans, yeah, I don't know what happened. If we sent them before you did the review, right? I don't know. But we did send.
We have, we missed the paper trail here.
They might have crossed.
Correct.
But the latest ones are dated July 26th.
The latest comments or?
The latest plan.
I don't have a point, so.
And actually, yeah, it says that you did the review on July 12th, so. Or the plans that you saw were on July 12th.
But you did.
But that's okay. I don't, I don't think there's anything in the comments that are large obstacles for us to.
No, they're all fairly standard.
Yeah, it's just standard comments, which some have already been addressed in the revised plan.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to think, our action tonight is, I don't, John, are you telling us that you didn't get a chance to review? Or you didn't see the newest version of the site plan?
That's worth this whole conclusion because John brought the plans the night of the meeting and gave them to us. I took them back with us, the hard copies, and did the review. And I thought that was the August 5th review. So the plans are to be presented.
A revised set of plans were emailed to you on August 5th. The revised hard copies were submitted on July 26th.
So you couldn't very well come on since you found August 5th. Got it. Which one? I think we're just a set of plans.
First set, yeah.
The revised plans, I don't think we.
I don't think Fusco's office has reviewed the latest set.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
But with that in mind, I don't know, other than looking at the plan you presented tonight, there's not much. We're going to have to wait for that review in order for, wherever questions may pop up. You know what I'm saying? There might, there's probably no action on it, Mike, because we don't have the latest plan presented or the latest reviews, that's all.
Okay.
Does it make sense at all?
It does, yeah. I mean.
We did get the first review in and, uh, the comments are fairly stan, standard. Um, it's, it beats, it doesn't require any variances, correct?
Correct, there's no variance.
So it beats them in. Our comments are our standard comments and we have seen it once and done one review. So if you want to schedule a public hearing, if you can, if you want to leave, if you can do.
But you, you don't know if you went to the perk test yet either.
Has that been done yet?
We have not done joint soil testing yet.
But that's, that's, that's always done sometime between the beginning and final approval. So, uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be done before you schedule a public hearing.
Well, next, uh, the planning board dates September the, I mean, September the 13th. 13th, is that defined?
Well, this has to go to the counties, though. It would need, it is 30 days. So if you could schedule it for the second meeting in September.
It would be September 27th.
That would be enough time.
Well, you want us to schedule that public hearing for 27th?
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Okay, I just need a motion to, what, schedule a public hearing for, uh, for the application for, uh, September the 27th?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So you're on for the 27th. In the meantime, we'll get the revised plans, get the comments.
We'll get the joint soil testing done and plans will go to the county. Amanda, do you need to declare the?
Yeah, we have to, we have to do 239.
Do we?
Yeah, we have to.
239 because of 42.
Because of 42.
But we only can declare a tent. All right, we need a motion to declare our tent to be lead agency.
Make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And, uh. Yeah, we can't do 239, no.
Yes.
No. We have to do 239. So if we do it now, today's the 22nd. So they'll have 30 days will that lapse for the 27th meeting. So just to, just let the.
We just need a motion to circulate to 239?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and it, it goes electronically now, so.
You know, we're seeing us. All right, Holly, I guess, uh, I'm sorry that we didn't get a chance to use those revised plans, but.
That's okay. I don't think, they weren't all that different, so.
But I think the 27th was pretty much summed it up.
Declaring the agency getting the county review and just go to the public hearing is a good step in protection for us.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number three on our agenda is the, uh, new century, um, application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. Uh, my name is Ryan Felonzer with Felonzer Engineering, uh, representing New Century Film at 517 Eversink. You recall our last meeting, I believe, August 9th? We had, uh, received our negative declaration, uh, but we had decided to wait till this meeting to review the proposed conditions for approval and wanted to have a list put together with Mr. Fusco's office reviewing and have that reviewed, uh, before the board can make an action on that. So I am in receipt of, uh, the Fusco Engineering Letter dated August 22nd with his comments, um, on that. John and Al's, I'm looking through these and I don't see anything, um, that we would object to, that it seems pretty standard and we need to, um, procure, uh, these application applications. So, uh, that is what we would, uh, request that the board make a conditional upon, uh, for second approval tonight. Thank you.
All right, well, it's grown by one item because we did get a response back from your state, D O T. John, you have that?
Yeah, we're going to email, of course, on the, if they want attorney names.
But that's going to happen when you, you on the map, it's like.
Uh, which it should be. Uh, I think we would like to see that.
Could you use your microphone, Mr. Nelson? We can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
No.
We would like to see the, the turning lane shown on the plan, uh, uh, as requested by the, by, by the D O T.
And that's got to be responded back to you.
It does, it's going to have to go through D O T to get approved, um, for that turning lane, which we would show on our plan and then submit to the town for files. So we are prepared to, uh, proceed with the turning lane, um, in conjunction with our, our traffic consultant. So what we need to get, there's a number of steps to do. We need a survey of that area with the right of way, uh, clearly delineated, updated, um, joint property owners of that length of, of space for the required, uh, length of the turning lane. Um, and we'll go through D O T to get that approval. And we'll come back to the board with that written approval as part of the condition.
Well, obviously we don't have our attorney here tonight. And I'm going to be honest with you, I'm a little hesitant myself, not myself, I should say. I'm hesitant to give, uh, that conditional approval tonight only because of the absence of our attorney. Uh, you may have some input on this that we're not familiar with. And I, it's my opinion that you just pump the brakes on us. Once again, I'm sorry, it's not a denial, it's just pump the brakes and build. You get a chance to get counsel back, uh, to review even maybe that submission from the D O T. And possibly maybe address any of these issues that, I don't, because our attorney hasn't seen this, I'm sure. I knew it was common, but.
Yeah, and I know, I mentioned that you didn't have to be here as well for tonight. So it was kind of hoping that the letter here, being thorough as it is, we would still need to adhere to these final approvals before you can sign off on the plan. So I'm hoping that I understand your, your, you know, sincerity with the D O T.
I'd rather err on a side of caution. If it involves another two week delay for you guys, this wouldn't be, to get it right.
Got you. So it's just you'd like to get input from the plan before either.
Absolutely. I haven't even asked for more comments, I'm sure. That's just my comments. As far as legal comments, it's, you know, John has other comments either, so.
I also think that this, if, if, if the board is inclined to proceed towards a conditional approval, that we have a written conditional approval, because there are a lot of conditions that are involved here. Comments 1 through 9 are just, are just some of those, or are some of those?
That was my understanding, if there be a written motion, if we can read into the record, which we cover in a second. So I would, I'm with you, uh, yeah, so we, so we, Glenn goes back and looks at.
Like I said, it's not any means of rejection, it's just.
I understand. I just want the board to know that, you know, when we ask Glenn, um, about, you know, these written conditions, you defer to Fusco's office, um. about, you know, these written conditions, you defer to Fusco's office doing that. So I thought this would suffice.
You kind of left it up to us at this meeting?
Sure.
To do a conditional approval, but I'm just saying, myself, maybe purposefully, the board, just maybe a little uncomfortable if he's not, to do that without legal confirmation.
There are no... Sure.
We didn't know until last meeting that he wasn't going to be here.
Correct.
So, I mean, no, we just, we just asked you to reapply or come back in two weeks.
I think we've waited two weeks.
Yeah, if any of us comments, we can address those comments at that time.
Yep.
All right?
Understood.
All right, appreciate it.
I was not at the August 9th meeting. Did the board did make a motion for a date of declaration?
They did.
Contingent upon the work that they did for the traffic study and everything else.
We just heard, uh, maybe that question.
Correct.
Would you, would you please add us to the next, any more meeting, perhaps, if it's open?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Comments to the board or something? Well, yeah, you could kind of, kind of...
Yeah, I'd like to wait for the written conditions.
Well, exactly, absolutely.
We don't even know what that question would be, if it's...
Well, I'm really concerned with site dis...
Yeah, that's what I mean.
You know, it's just another condition, just a condition, so.
You have to wait for the board to look into it, make sure it's mandatory.
Yeah, it's not a suggestion. John, got anything else?
There were comments from the county planning department on this application, correct?
Oh, um...
Yes.
Yes.
We did some.
So the applicant, I don't believe, objected any of those, or did they?
No, I think they sent a letter saying they didn't object to it, okay?
I think they went through the listings, said they agree with your group.
I think, yeah.
So they're not looking for any override, not any of their comments?
I don't think so.
If I can actually, I think that was stamped in and made part of the public record, so I actually have to...
This is, this is Felonzer's, this was from, this is from Felonzer's, but I hope we're on a chemistry here.
Oh, yeah. I don't have it. I'm standing here and need it from the office.
I don't think they screened it anyway.
No, I don't.
We're going to copy this. I think we have, it's on our...
I'll, I'll send, I'll email it. Yeah.
Have you looked at the scan? Did it send it back?
Yeah, and this was another one, contingent upon a conditional approval was, were these comments, that was the Orange County...
They have no objection to any of them.
No, correct, correct. All right, the last thing on our agenda is through the minutes of the August 9th meeting. Did we read the minutes? What's the minutes? See, Amanda?
Yes.
What was the motion approval?
I'll make that motion. This is for the last meeting.
Yeah, you were here, but did you read the minutes?
Yeah, I did read it.
I didn't get to blow it out.
I'll second it.
All right, home favorite? Yes, yes, okay, the minutes, your minutes passed. Good for you. Anything else? Good for the cause? Any discussion? Anything in doubt?
Just a question I have. I've waited 10 years or anything, so that project I'm next to work with, I don't think it's used.
Just the TEC is proceeding with the cleanup, as far as I know, correct?
It hasn't been back before this board in eight months. How would they be dealing with what's in, whether it's... Yeah, that's been a long time.
That's what I was talking about, if the site plan has just died or whether they're just bleeding to come back. John Fuller will probably be the person to ask the next time he's here. Just curious.
All right, welcome. I guess, Teresa, well, I have the honor. Home favorite?
Yes.
Yes.